...and state rep, I'm disappointed that you're supporting these bills, Lydia. I encourage those truly interested in the welfare of our teens' brains to speak with Patty Hymanen, who's also representative, and she's also a neurologist, truly qualified to speak. And finally, Representative Shanette, most people are like you in regards to marijuana. Seventy percent of our student body does not use, and ninety-five percent of our adults don't use either. Thank you for being a great role model for our teens.
Representative Powell. Can I ask that you submit written testimony? You can do it electronically through our clerk, and she'll make sure we all get it.
I will do that tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You work at the school, do you?
Yes.
And you are a what again?
I'm a certified alcohol and drug counselor, as well as a certified school counselor.
I'm going to try to ask you a question that you can respond to legally.
Okay. I'm going to try to answer in a way legally.
In your role as backmodel, and in speaking to students, have you found that there is a relation between the parent and student with regard as to marijuana use? And I'm going to go a little further, the parents of those parents. So, do you follow where I'm coming from?
I know exactly what you're trying to say, and I'm going to try to be diplomatic and honest. Yes, there's a relationship between kids' use and parental use. There's still the number one influence on their kids, for or against. And, you know, we want to help them to make good parenting decisions. But I think that something like this could potentially make it even more complicated for them, because as you know, and as others have indicated, they didn't know what they were voting on in Colorado. Our parents are still thinking it's the weed that was no big deal from years ago. So, I think we're in a real pickle here, and I'm just hoping that we make the right decision to help these parents make a good, solid decision. Let's put our money in the education, let's not put our time and energy into legalization.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tyler Barrows.
Hello. My name is Tyler Barrows, and I wanted to thank you all so much for being this opportunity to speak right now. I'm very excited. I represent New York High School and our stand on legalization of marijuana. At our school, we have a substance abuse prevention group called TIDAWAVE. See my shirt right here. TIDAWAVE stands for Teens in Drug Awareness Leading, Working, and Valuing Self-Abuse. Essentially, we stand for a healthy choice of all high schools and students should be making if they want to be the best versions of themselves. All twenty-two members of the TIDAWAVE, for short, pledge to be chemical-free for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year for their entire high school career. Each member carries their own story with them as to why they want to be chemical-free, and why they want to teach our community about the dangers of substance abuse. The fact of the matter is, many teens do not fully understand the risk that they are putting themselves in by using substances such as marijuana. Our job as TIDAWAVE members is to clear up any clargness around the understanding of substance abuse and teach both teens and adults alike that not everybody is using and not everybody wants marijuana in the typical class. The problem is, pro-marijuana ads and legalization campaigns are showing teens the exact opposite. They are telling them that marijuana is okay to use and has no real dangers. The argument that teens under the age of twenty-one will not be effective is preposterous. How do I say that? This argument is in avoidance of the fact that anything legal to adults becomes more readily available to teens. A perfect example is alcohol. As a senior in high school, I have seen my fair share of substance abuse and the effects it's had on teens' mind, body, and soul. I watched both friends and families become completely different people ever since then they started using it. Marijuana takes over a person's life and never lets go. One personal example of this that I recently found out is that my cousin, who we'll call Steph, was diagnosed with bipolar syndrome. Ever since she started self-medicating, her anxiety with marijuana, she has completely changed. Steph went from a confident, loving fifteen-year-old girl to an unstable ticking time bomb, who could hardly even hold a conversation anymore without even crying or yelling. After hearing her talk to my family about wanting to end her life, I really realized that marijuana can destroy the life of anybody who uses it. All I wanted for Steph to be as happy and successful as she is and capable of being, but unfortunately, that's not possible until marijuana lets go for a full owner. When she had this marijuana, you asked? A nineteen-year-old boy who graduated high school last year with a green card has been picking up my cousin and selling her weed. I've done my research, and only about two percent of the population who throws a medical marijuana that was designed for her are actually receiving it. If it's medicinal purpose that we want to talk about, we know for a fact that scientists are able to extract THC from marijuana and make it into a pill that you cannot get high off of. So then if this is the case, which it is, then why are we even distributing smokable marijuana that can get a patient high? Before we even discuss recreational use of marijuana, we should first discuss medicinal use. Here's what I think. The only thing legalization of recreational marijuana will do for our society is hurt our younger population. Since I am a member of the youth and not an adult trying to speak for the youth, I know this will become a reality. Youth are the ones at risk for this bill, not the adults over the age of twenty-one with fully developed brain. If this bill gets passed, the state of Maine will be neglecting the physical and mental health of all its teens. I love my state and don't want to think that it doesn't love me and my teens. Thank you guys for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your story. Very well done. Any questions for Tyler? Representative Powell. Have you guys considered taking your chair along the road down to high schools?
Absolutely. We go to a bunch of high schools in our community, we talk about, you know, the importance of substance abuse prevention and staying sober, and how, you know, it really does bring out the best version of yourself, because, you know, you're not yourself if you use substances. And so we go to different communities, different schools, we do a bunch of stuff in our own community as well, to teach adults, because they need to be educated as well, because they're the parents of these students. So we're already on top of that. Actually, the May 27th, we're going to Burlington High School.
Yale.
High School in Massachusetts to talk to them about it.
Well, I asked that because we actually had a poll today in the House on the DARE program. So we debated that, and that's a program that was around years ago, and we talked about what's in the school now, and you're speaking long as to what we still want to make today.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon.
My name is Shannon Todd, and I'm a junior at York High School, and I'm also a member of TIDAWAVE. And I pledge to be chemical-free for my entire high school career. I sit at a lunch table of a group of six biggest users in my school. What pro-marijuana users are saying is that it's only going to be legalized for adults over twenty-one, but the biggest way to get alcohol for teens is through their parents, and the same thing will happen with marijuana. If parents do it, then teens in my school think it's okay to do it. And I've heard, actually heard people say this. The kids at my lunch table think marijuana is no big deal, but I've grown up with these six kids, and I've seen them change dramatically. They have become less motivated in school and in sports. A lot of them were star athletes in middle school, and now some of them are kicked off sports teams, and they aren't allowed to play anymore. Some of them talk about how they know they're not going to make it through college just because of drugs, because they're going to party all the time. A lot of them have become very angry, and they're mean and angry with me and other people in school. They just don't care anymore about anything, and you can tell because that's all they talk about every day and all the time. My friends think that it's cool to share wild stories without using, but they're just setting a bad example for the underclassmen in my school. Someone very close to me also uses, and I've seen the effects that it has had on this person since freshman year. Marijuana has caused this person to become very lazy and unmotivated in school and in sports. This person has also become hostile towards me and my choice to be sober, and as a result of this, we have grown apart. I think this person has harmed my family, and the legalization will affect families of mine very greatly. It will affect the students and my classmates greatly, and I don't want to see anybody affected by legalization of this drug.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Shannon? Thank you. Mark.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity to speak here. And I'm a student advocate from New York, just like they are, for drug education and awareness and prevention. And I personally have seen the effects of marijuana on family members very close to me. It very badly affected them, really destroying every aspect of their life and showing the signs of true addiction that you'd see in a alcoholic or any other drug user, that everyone says that doesn't come from marijuana. It all started with one joint, just like any other thing, and then it led to him now going to prison because of other drugs, like the big opiates that everyone's speaking of. He's been to jail three times because, it started off, the first was because of marijuana, and the second two were because of OxyContin's, and the third was heroin. I think it is a false statement once anyone says that this drug is not addictive, considering I've seen it addictive when he can't go a day or two without just smoking a little marijuana because he said he's not getting the right high. This high is produced unnaturally, that your body already produces these chemicals, and you're just adding new chemicals, therefore making it so your body thinks it doesn't have to produce it. So then once you stop using it, you physically feel different, therefore making it a necessity for you to use every day. And then after a while, using pot, you can't smoke so much that it becomes numb, and you don't feel the effects anymore, therefore leading to why they call it a gateway drug more than anything, because it leads to the opiates, because they're looking for that same high. My family member is proof directly from the pathway to higher drug abuse, and he has done anything he could possibly do, including destroying our family, to get the drugs that he wanted. If this bill is passed, it'll give easier access to this gateway being opened, and to students of my age, who I think very highly of being able to use. This happened with alcohol, and it'll probably be just as bad, or if not worse, if this is passed. And I'm speaking on behalf of my TIDAWAVE members, our sober friends' community, which is over two hundred, and the majority of our high school, which doesn't use, on the behalf of not passing this bill. And I, the last closing statement would be, if you pass this bill, they're just going to look for the next drug to legalize. So I have to ask, what is, my question is, where will it stop? And like, why will we, when will it stop continuing this?
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your testimony. Kayla.
Hi, my name is Kayla Edmister, and I'm a freshman at New York High School. I'm representing choose-to-eat-alcoholic inclusion, like Sally explained. I'm also representing Silver Friends, which is a group at New York High School that any teen can join, and they have to commit to staying sober for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days in a year. I strongly feel that recreational marijuana should not be legal in our state. Reasons I think this way is because I have seen students in my class and their school in general smoking marijuana. It is sending a negative message that marijuana is okay. Also, the kids who are already smoking at schools can be a bad influence on kids who normally do not smoke. Additionally, I have noticed that smoking tends to get worse in the summer because of how much freedom the kids have. I'm not saying that having more freedom in the summer is a bad thing, but if we were going to have more easy access to this drug, it would be. If people are already going to abuse the medical marijuana, the recreational will be a lot worse. Marijuana is also a drug, and most drugs can be addictive. Just like marijuana, it affects the brain like any other addictive drug would. Marijuana can also take control over what matters to you, like your health, driving, and your education. If marijuana becomes legal, companies are going to start selling their products like candies, brownies, and cookies. Those contaminated items are not directed towards adults. Kids in my class are attracted to that sort of snack, and it's going to seem like more and more okay, which it shouldn't be at all. I'd like to walk in across, and for those kids on our team to be allowed access to recreational marijuana, it is going to affect the entire team's planning ability and evaluation. I urge you, for the sake of teens in general, to make sure that recreational marijuana stays illegal in the state of Maine. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Tyler, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a freshman.
Yes.
I'm a freshman year. I don't.
He reminds the whole time.
Just a couple of quick questions, Dave.
Yes.
As a freshman, do you feel a lot of pressure in the spot you find yourself in with other students?
You mean like?
Are you getting pressure from the fact that you're a clean person, and you're trying to give them advice? Do you feel a pressure as a freshman right now?
Well, not really, because if I feel strongly about something that I really care about, I'm going to let people know that I care about that. So I don't really care what other people think about what I.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Good luck to you on that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Elizabeth.
How many more do we have?
Oh, we have two more pages.
How many?
Two more pages.
No.
Yep.
What number are we up to?
We are up to twenty-one of forty-five. So we're almost halfway.
Can we drop it back to one minute?
Yeah. Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, members of the committee, my name is Lynn Blackwell-More, and I'm a resident of Portland. I'm also here on behalf of the Opportunity Alliance, a nonprofit organization that provides advocacy, leadership, and support to identify the goals and address the needs of individuals, families, and communities in Cumberland County, and in Maine as a whole. As a part of the public health program of the Opportunity Alliance, I'm a substance abuse prevention specialist, working with fourteen tabs in Cumberland County to reduce and prevent teen drug and alcohol use. I am here today to neither support nor oppose the proposed legislation. After much research and internal inquiry, the Opportunity Alliance has taken the stance to neither oppose nor support marijuana legalization, but to instead offer specific policy recommendations that we think will reduce the harm of legalization of teens. To that end, I am here to offer those recommendations. Marijuana use is harmful to young people. You've heard the research on the impacts of marijuana use already. Substances affect teenagers very differently than adults, and marijuana is no exception. Even without legalization, one of four main high school students uses marijuana regularly, according to the 2013 Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey. We also know that marijuana use among teens is higher in states that have legal medical marijuana, leaving one to worry that teen use will increase with legalization. So if we can agree that we don't want teenagers using marijuana, how do we keep them safe during the time that shifts from public opinion and policy to legalization? I'm just going to highlight four recommendations, four of the recommendations that we have. And the first is to restrict young people's access to marijuana. We know that, you know, from the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey, students report that they thought marijuana was easy to get, where eight times as likely to use marijuana regularly compared to their peers who find this difficult. Adding marijuana to the alcohol furnishing and social distancing laws already in place will be a way to hold those responsible for keeping marijuana out of teens' hands. Restricting the sale of edible marijuana in the form of candies and treats that attract children, and require the edible to be locked up, will also protect children from unknowingly adjusting marijuana. Number two, no marketing. Alcohol manufacturers spend almost six billion dollars annually on advertisement and promotion. The alcohol industry involuntarily agreed not to advertise on programs where greater than thirty percent of the audience is under twenty-one, yet in 2010, a quarter of all alcohol advertisements were on such programs. Research shows advertising has a significant impact on teen use. The industry is expected to self-monitor, which doesn't necessarily really work, and we can't make the same mistake with marijuana. No marketing needs, fewer opportunities for young people to be unlawfully targeted. Number three, more prevention than treatment money. In 2010, the cost of substance abuse in Maine was over one point four billion. The largest three factors were crime, death, and medical care. Treatment made up less than four percent of the cost, and prevention an even smaller amount. In 2012, the NIA said twenty-three million people needed treatment, and only two point five million got that treatment that they needed. We need, we must allocate more money to prevention and treatment, because we'll see an increase in problems. And we just need it now, regardless of what you choose to do. And number four, mental health services. In addition to prevention and treatment, the increase in marijuana use will lead to higher incidence of mental health issues, and we must be able to have money to support people with mental health services in the future. So in conclusion, we think it's of utmost importance to move forward with our eyes wide open to all the possible unintended consequences that could arise, and work together to create public policy that will limit the amount of harm caused to teen health and the health of our future state. I hope you will consider these policy recommendations as you deliberate on the proposed legislation, and I'm prepared to work with the committee during the work session if you so choose. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Steve Rule.
Do you have his name? You already have your name. You're good.
Do you sign in?
No, we haven't signed in, and we're good. Thank you.
Your committee members, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, thank you for being here today. I'm here today, my name is Steve Whiteheart from the Megalopolis, Lincoln, and I am here today as a board member of the Medical Marijuana Caregivers of Maine. We are testifying either for or against LD-1380 or Fullerton 10, or testimony would be the same on both. This testimony is submitted by the Medical Marijuana Caregivers of Maine, MCM, which is Maine's largest medical marijuana trade organization. MCM represents nearly seventeen hundred small businesses doing business as licensed caregivers in Maine. No other group of new businesses has attained that number of new jobs during this time period. These new businesses have made a sizable contribution to Maine's economy. Licensing fees paid by caregivers have made the Maine's medical marijuana program the only completely self-funded program in Maine, requiring zero tax dollars to administer. In fact, we regularly produce a surplus of funds that is put into the general fund or used to reduce licensing fees for caregivers. Maine's medical marijuana program is considered the best medical marijuana program in the country, with other states reaching out to see why our model works so well. Maine's medical marijuana program is described as striking a good common sense balance between regulation and patient access to medical marijuana. Everyone here today should be proud of the leadership Maine has shown. Maine has once again been a model for the nation. Any legalization law considered must not compromise the integrity of Maine's medical marijuana program. Tens of thousands of patients, from veterans suffering with PTSD to children crippled by epileptic seizures, depend on Maine's medical marijuana caregivers and nonprofit dispensaries to supply them with their doctor-recommended medication. Just as importantly, the thousands of small businesses the program has created, real jobs created by businesses owned and operated by real majors, would be at risk. Any bill that you consider today must include caregivers, as they are the backbone of Maine's legal marijuana industry. We have led the way, and are, quite frankly, the model that we think you should follow.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott.
Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, I'm here to shotgun your great meeting. You're representing, I'm the director of Sammy's Smart Approaches to Marijuana. We are all volunteer, nonpartisan alliance of community leaders, parents, and other leaders who have dedicated an army meaningful policy, the science of today's marijuana. And that is what we're talking about here, is today's marijuana. And this is what today's marijuana now looks like. You're receiving my testimony with some pictures. This is what legalized marijuana looks like right now in Colorado. This is today's marijuana, slalikes, it's gummy bears, sodas. This is why we knew we're doing the talks, either these bills would be introducing to Maine. This is what will be in Maine communities. This isn't what will be in the community where I am raising my three children. There's been a lot of great testimony earlier from our college members as far as the science and the data, and I'm not going to rehash that, I mean, honestly, they did that out of the park. I'm here really to address the two issues. One is the commercialization, which is what this, is this a product? This is a product. We know from lessons of tobacco and alcohol, candy flavored, sweet flavored products, cartoon characters. We're seeing that already in Colorado, is that is that what? I assume in regular contact with public health folks of Colorado, and they are seeing this, and they are dealing with this. So the reality made us where we're coming here. But I really want to talk about the issue that some of our folks are hesitant on yet, which is one of the arguments, which is inevitability, which is the idea that this is coming whether we like it or not, we should just get on the bus now. I would like to reference the town of New York and the city of Lewiston. In 2014, both municipalities rejected marijuana legalization. Despite no opposition here, despite no funding, despite the funding from the state marijuana industry interests, those communities rejected marijuana legalization. In Lewiston, they rejected it candidly by the whole digits. It's very clear that there are many minors who are, from many of them today, that do not want legalization. They do not want to commercialize marijuana markets and stores in their communities because of the access to youth, the issue to public health and public safety that you've seen. I've also given you testimony from the Lewiston School Committee Chair, Jane Sandy, that committee actually adopted a resolution opposing marijuana legalization because of barriers to education increase. I've also included a statement from the Maine Substance Abuse Services Commission, on which I said, also a statement opposing the legalization of recreational marijuana because of many of the reasons we heard today. I'd like to close, and there was a question about the data of Colorado, going from number fourteen to number three, and I would like to say that that comes from a national survey in drug usage help, which is a national survey, it's really the gold standard when you're funding about measuring youth use, it's given every year, very strong reliability and validity, so it's something you can really count on. And with that, I am happy to come to the work session to produce any other information you will need. I'm announcing any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
David. David Boyer.
Me.
That's you.
Housekeeping note, someone was nice enough to pull out, sign me up, so you can scratch out thirty-four.
Oh, perfect.
Just going to come up again, so.
Oh, perfect. I think we need to.
Sure. Sure. So.
There, now we are halfway.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I can't breathe.
I'm ready.
All right. Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, appreciate it, and the committee members, appreciate your time and letting us come up here today and make our case for, against, or neither. I'm just going to address, people said my testimony is pretty comprehensive, but I just wanted to put some facts out there. First off, the Rocky Mountain High sent this report that the opposition continues to cite. It was government-funded, it wouldn't exist without prohibition. I want to read you two quotes from the study itself. This report will cite data sets with terms such as marijuana-related or tested positive for marijuana. Those are in quotes, for those that are listening at home. That does not necessarily imply that marijuana was the cause of the incident. Here's one more. Increase in ER visits observed over these three years may due partly or completely to increases in reporting by emergency rooms. Marijuana-related is also referred to as marijuana mentioned. This means the data can be obtained from the lab tests, self-emitted, or some other form of validation by physicians. That does not necessarily imply marijuana was the cause of the emergency admission or hospitalization. As you all know, marijuana stays in your system for up to thirty days, just because it was in your system, that you need to wire there that day. What we hear from the opposition is care tactics, and that's how marijuana was made illegal in the first place. We were convinced in the thirties that this was far too harmful for adults to use, and that's why we have prohibition. We know that is not the case today. We know that marijuana, they stay for the now alcohol. You can't, the addiction rates are less, it's less toxic, you can't overdose from marijuana. You can overdose from other substances. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. My name is David Boyer. I'm a main political writer for the Marijuana Policy Project, also the campaign manager for the Citizens Initiative that will be on the ballot next year. We feel very strongly that we wrote a responsible legislation that will have a slow regulated rollout of this industry, that.
that is pretty much in between both Representative Dions and Diane Russell's proposals. So support both of them because they end prohibition and they stop punishing adults for using a substance safer than alcohol. And if you guys in the legislature don't do anything, we're confident that the voters in Maine will do something. And it'll be right where you're at in two years. I'd like to also point to the sheet with Diane, Representative Russell's letterhead there, talks about some statistics after Colorado, because that's a lot of the questions we had from the committee. You'll see that crime did not go up, it could be already went down marginally. On the back of it, there's some statistics about teen use in the schools as well and it shows that that hasn't gone up as well. One funny point that the opposition continues to make is that this is not our parents' marijuana smart code. Yes, that's accurate. If you really believe that and think marijuana is harmful, then isn't that a good reason to regulate it? So we have labeling, we know how much THC is. You know, we've gotten that way from alcohol instead of 3Xs. We know amicloca is really light and Isomene craft brew is stronger. And then you have liquor. There are different potencies. But even the strongest marijuana is still safer than alcohol. And I think that needs to be remembered. As well as the fact that we're talking about adults today, as much as we've rated the kids today and talked about the children, the children, and believing, we don't think children should use marijuana. We just think that regulating and controlling marijuana makes a lot more sense than what we've been doing now. Because what we've been doing now is the definition of sanity. We keep doing it for the last eight years and there's 80% of high school kids say they have access to marijuana. So why would we continue this? If any other program here in the state house, at 80% fail rate, we would get rid of it, we would reform it. Why aren't we doing that for marijuana prohibition? The social costs of marijuana versus alcohol and tobacco are far less. You'll see that in my testimony, some data from journals. We talk about journals and citations. These are real scientific journals, okay? And then lastly, one of the representatives had a point about drug testing. I believe both bills do not interfere with a private employer to impose drug tests that they see fit. So Representative Garish, those companies can still institute what they think is the best policy. Ideally, we'd like them to be comparable to alcohol where if someone used marijuana the night before, just like someone used alcohol the night before, it doesn't impair them on the job the next day.
Any other questions? Representative Timon?
Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to correct him on something. Number one, we didn't praise anyone here, but the ones that we did praise, I had a great deal of, I had a great deal of respect for what they said because it was really from the heart and fact. And I'm not sure when you started, where the information came back to what might be. Thank you.
Thank you. I felt the same way. Okay, the next person is Michael D.
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen.
Welcome. That's all right. You're not the first one.
And members of the Joint State Committee on Digital Justice and Public Safety. In other words, the Committee of State Police Power and Public Safety. I am Michael D. of Augusta, Maine. I claim the main course that marijuana laws are unreasonable police regulations. I view my fundamental rights to liberty, property, privacy, due to process of law, without a compelling state interest. Laws contributing to 14th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, not on the Constitution. The main course told me that marijuana is not a fundamental right. In future, if you decide a rational basis, rational police power. I take it all the way up to the Supreme Court. I'm still here. I'm still reading this. Okay. The main Constitution, Article 4, Part 3, Section 1, Last Sentence. "Legislation shall have full power to make and establish all reasonable laws and regulations, not repugnant to this Constitution nor to that of the United States." Okay. Amendment 14, skip a part of it. "No state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person in this jurisdiction equal protection of the law." Amendment 4, "The right of people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. Unreasonable laws shall not be violated." Okay. Main Constitution, Article 1, Declaration of Rights, Section 1, Natural Rights. "All people of law, equally free and independent, have certain natural inherent and unalienable rights, among which are those enjoying, defending, life, liberty, and acquiring, possessing, protecting, property, and pursuing the same safety and happiness." Open Thomas Jefferson's first inaugural address. "All will bear in mind that this sacred principle, that though of the will of a majority is in all cases to prevail, that the will to a rightful must be reasonable, that minority possesses their equal rights, and the equal law must protect and to violate with equal pressure." A Supreme Court decision, "The police power of states ordered to constitutional limitations is the government's power to self-protection, prevents reasonable regulations, not rational regulations, of rights and property in particular for centuries in the preservation of community from injury." If I'm growing pot, I'm getting stoned at home, I don't bother anybody else's rights. "No justification for use of police power, the main to provide me my liberty, evade my privacy, or search for..." and so on. Pride, marijuana's property. It's property. Okay. Marijuana, Amendment 14, Bill 11, reasonable and will end the abuse of rational police power sanctioned by the force of determined challenge. And for reference, you should look at your legislative handbook, Constitutional Limitations, page 49. It talks about rational police power, rational laws, and fundamental rights, how fundamental rights can apply to state interests. To be reasonable laws have to have a complete solution. And all I've been hearing about are traffic, driving. How come we haven't gotten the money to get drug testing for, to have it done by now? Why isn't it been done before? Because it probably hasn't been a problem. Now there's a problem with legalizing. Should have had money and had drug testing, driving, a long time ago. And flashing a light tells me I got to go and it's just, legalizing, well, legalize starts with gateway. Gateway drug, gateway for police to gain more lives, you lack organized crime. And, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.